Good evening, everyone. My name is Chelsea Hummer. I am a certified lead moderator and will be moderating tonight's forum. On behalf of the Lead Women Voters, I want to thank everyone for being here this evening. I'd like to extend a special thanks to the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation for their civility-certified event information and guidance. Thank you also to PAC TV, who will be filming tonight's forum. The Lead Women Voters is pleased to present this General Issues Forum for the 4th District and At-Large Candidates Running for Duluth City Council. We thank all the candidates for their engagement in the community and for participating in this forum. At this point, I would like to request from the audience that you turn off your cell phones, perhaps with candidates also. The Lead Women Voters have had a presence in the Duluth community for over 90 years. The League's mission is to promote citizen involvement in government and increase public understanding of major public policy issues. The League believes that an informed citizenry is the foundation of effective democracy. The League is open to membership for all people who are interested in nonpartisan civic participation. If you'd like more information, you can pick up a membership form tonight at our information table, or you can check out our website, lwdduluth.org. We also encourage you to review the Voter Guide on the Lead website, which gives you information on all candidates that are running for office on November 7, 2017. If you're interested in finding information about same-day registration, your voting district, and your polling location, we can help you with that information at our table also. We can also help you link to that data online. Please remember to exercise your right to vote on November 7. Tonight's event is a civility-certified event. At this time, I'd like to introduce Kathryn Lenz from the Civility Project.
Hi. This evening, you received some materials from Speaker Peace, the Civility Project. This card has the nine tenants of Civility, and the white sheet has our expectation to view the audience members as the forum proceeds. Speaker Peace, the Civility Project is an initiative of the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation and the Lead of Women Voters Duluth. The Foundation and the Lead of Women Voters Duluth would like to thank in advance the candidates and, gee, all the audience members for your cooperation.
Thank you, Kathryn. The Lead Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. While the League studies and takes positions on issues, the League does not support or endorse political parties or candidates. The views expressed at tonight's forum are those of the participating candidates and not those of the Lead Women Voters Duluth. League sponsorship of this forum is not a League endorsement of any of the individual candidates participating. Regarding the structure of tonight's forum, the forum will begin with candidates giving a two-minute introductory statement, followed by a two-part question round. Each candidate will be given one and a half minutes in which to provide a response during the question round. The first part of the question round consists of questions solicited and vetted by our organizing committee. The second part of the question round consists of questions submitted from audience members and questions that were submitted on the League's website, as time allows. The question round is structured so that each candidate will be asked questions in rotating order. The order in which candidates will respond is determined at random, and we will rotate the responses throughout the evening. Candidates are not provided with questions in advance. We would encourage all you audience members to submit questions of your own. Index cards are provided at the door and at the back of the room, I believe. If you need cards or inform, please raise your hand and someone will bring them to you. Please write your questions on the index cards and pass them to the end of the row so our volunteers can collect them. All submitted questions will be assessed for clarity and bias. Those that fall into the same general category will be consolidated. This will allow us to cover as many topics as possible in the time allotted. Questions that are deemed unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. All questions do become the property of the Lead Women Voters. Following the question round, each candidate will be allowed a two-minute statement to conclude the forum. At this time, I would like to introduce the candidates. The candidates for 4th District City Council are Renee Van Nette and Howie Hanson. At-large City Council candidates are Zach Filipovich, Janet Kennedy, Barbara Russ, and Rich Updegrove. We will now open the forum with candidate introductory statements. Each candidate will have two minutes. I'd like to ask candidate Filipovich to begin.
One mic didn't mean one mic. All right. Thank you, and thank you to the Lead Women Voters. Thank you all for being here. My name is Zach Filipovich. I'm one of your current At-Large City Councilors. I really, really love Duluth, and I'm glad that we're all here tonight. And November 7 is fast approaching. We're almost done. I grew up here in Duluth next to Chester Creek. I'm the son of two incredible, hard-working, union parents. I went to Duluth Central High School. That's where my campaign colors come from, "Go Trojans." Growing up here in Duluth and working with my parents and grandparents, they're the ones who taught me to never forget where I come from, and that's from the east hillside of Duluth. I worked my way through college at UMD, and now I am an accountant working downtown for a family-owned accounting firm. I'm really proud of the experiences that I have had on the city council, particularly as council president, bringing forward the task force and bringing diverse voices together to talk about the important initiative Earn Sick and Save Time. We have a couple of task force members tonight. As treasurer of the Duluth 1200 Fund, I voted to help grant low-interest loans to small businesses in Duluth to provide gap financing so they can hire more people at living wages. As secretary of the Duluth Economic Development Authority, I work on projects and developments that provide good-paying jobs to people in Duluth and housing to people here in Duluth. I have seen that when we support economic equity in our community and in our city, we have the resources to provide for public safety, to preserve our environment, and yes, even to get to some of those roads. And that's what I want to focus on over the next four years, issues that we can control and impact here in the city of Duluth. I'm the only financial professional on the council right now, and the only financial professional in this race, and over the next four years, I want to continue to serve the people and the citizens of the city of Duluth. Thank you very much.
Candidate Kennedy?
Hello, I'm Janet Kennedy. Thank you for being here, and you are in hunter country. Woo-hoo! I did go to dental, so... Yes, my name is Janet Kennedy, and I'm running for Duluth City Council at large because I believe a community can survive and prosper as a whole when we're all walking on even ground. You know, I really believe, living here all my life, that there are things that we need to do as far as building our leadership, and it's time to secure a more inclusive city council leadership. As a lifelong Duludian, successfully using community services to make ends meet as a single mother, I've worked hard, and I knew of my responsibility to become a resilient citizen and as a mom. I needed to seek opportunities beyond my barriers and rise above my barriers as an African American. One thing I learned through my church and my mother is to give back to my community. I have extensive experience in a broad range of... Working with a broad range of people with abilities, backgrounds, and neighborhoods through my 25 years of physical therapy as a director of rehab and as a program director of PTO-T and speech. I've gained practical experience through volunteering and serving you as a planning commissioner, working with the Public Health and Human Services Advisory Committee, working on the Health and All Policies campaign, working with the Sixth Judicial District Equal Justice Committee, and the Mayor's Imagine Duluth 2035. We have been working really, really hard to make sure that we have an equitable Duluth. Three of the things I'm going to be working on is health equity, social justice, human rights, resiliency, and sustainability. I know that we can make a difference in the life of all peoples, and when we're making policies, we need to make sure we consider all voices. One thing I want you to know is, as you elect to be, and should I be elected, I will always listen, and you will always be heard. I urge you to vote for me, November 7.
Candidate Russ?
Good evening. It's nice to see all of you here tonight. This is our last forum, I believe. There was going to be one more, and it was canceled for lack of interest by enough candidates, I guess, but... So anyway, I was first elected in 2013, and I filed for office about one week after I had retired from the St. Louis County Attorney's Office, and this wasn't really in my plan, but I was asked to do so, and so I ran for office, and I was elected. And I'll tell you, the last four years have been most interesting, that is for sure. First of all, I brought with me over 35 years of public service, including three years as a state planner, and over 30 years in the county attorney's office. Most of that time, I was a single parent, raising three biracial children, who are all adults at this time, and I have four grandchildren. In the past four years, my focus has been primarily on housing. I'm also a DETA commissioner and worked on a lot of projects that some are finished and some we're still working on. I've spent a lot of time with the Affordable Housing Coalition, the 2035 Imagine Duluth, and I've been helping the plan department updating the comp plan. The lack of housing is a very serious problem that we have, and we need to work on it in a lot of ways. I will work with Labor Department with SOAR and other workforce, as well as the school district. I think we really need to be careful about the future because we are going to be challenged with not having the workforce that we need for the businesses that we're bringing into Duluth.
Candidate Updegrove?
Good evening. My name is Rich Updegrove, and I'd like to thank the League and the Civility Project for putting on this forum. I'm a high school teacher with Duluth Public Schools, where I teach economics, law, and government for college credit. That's through Fond du Lac Tribal and Community College and through the University of Minnesota Duluth. I'm also, probably most importantly, the father of a nine-year-old and a 12-year-old, Leaf and Aurora, and we're raising our children in the house that my wife's great-grandparents built 100 years ago when they immigrated here from Sweden. It's really important to me as a city councilor that I'll be able to focus on providing services for the youth and young families of our community. I think if we want to make long-lasting change, generational change, in issues of inequality, economic equality, racial and gender equality, we can do a lot of that through our services to children, making sure that we are providing services, that we are keeping our public libraries open, and that we recognize the long impact that has. As someone who grew up in a trailer park with my parents and grandparents, extended family, I've seen what it is to struggle, and when I became a teacher with a union job with the benefits and healthcare and services that I get from that, I really made a step up from where my parents still are, living in that park. And I want to be part of providing those economic opportunities to others in Duluth. I started my career in Duluth, working for Youth Employment Services, Yes Duluth, and Project Reach Out, a runaway and homeless youth program, and those experiences have shaped me as well. When we had our first children, or when we had our children, we didn't have healthcare, and that was a real challenge. We were on food stamps. I mean, this is not something that I've just experienced as a child. It is something that I've also experienced as a parent, and I'll bring that to the city council.
Candidate Van Nette?
Thank you. Hello, I'm Renee Van Nette. Who am I? I am an American Indian woman. My family is originally from northern Minnesota, Red Lake and Lake Lake, Kansas, or Jigway. We migrated to Minneapolis and then down to here finally, as a giant group of people. So we all landed here when I was about 10. As I said, I was Abundant Shunabe, and my core values is kind of how I make my decisions all the time, and those core values are humility, truth, courage, honesty, respect, love, and wisdom. And I will always use these values and the way I think about things through that lens, and kind of think about the work I do and how I work with people through that holistic way of thinking. I'm employed at Community Action. I'm a foster parent. I just bought a house in the Heights. I'm super excited about that, that I can't wait to get in there and actually spend some time there, but I'm super excited about that. And I'm your neighbor in the 4th District. I absolutely love it. There's so many different opportunities that I take full advantage of. I work like that hard to do that. I talked about, I was born in generational poverty and worked my way through college, high school, because I needed to do something better for my kids and my parents, my mom. Need to do better than what she did, and she wanted me to do that. She was a single parent, too. So that means a lot to me, that I was... stays with me, and she's passed on now, and I think about the things I'm doing, and she pushing me through that. I'm in this work right now. I've worked a lot on public safety in the city, in the 4th District and the whole city from the Citizen Reel Board. I'm an employment navigator, like I said, so I work on unemployment, and I've worked in the civil service board. I see this stuff. And accessibility, being an accessible person to help get things met in the community. Thank you.
Candidate Hanson?
Thank you, and thank you also to the Civility Group and the Lead Women Voters for organizing this tonight. I met, I think it was yesterday or maybe the day before, with Peter Passy of the Duluth News Tribune, and he's doing interviews, I'm sure, with all of us for a piece he's doing. He asked me some interesting questions as to why I originally ran for city council and then why I decided to run again. And at first, it kind of, I took a step back and had a hard time answering the question, but the more that I thought about it and the more that we engaged in that conversation, it became clear to me that, you know, I got in, I think, for all the right reasons to serve, and now here we are, four years later, and the part that I can honestly say that I've enjoyed the public service part of it. This is not the part that I do enjoy. I don't like sitting here selling myself. It's a very difficult thing for me to do. I would rather let my work and my experience and in my industry, my writing as a journalist and as a photographer, to speak for itself. So I don't enjoy this. You know, looking forward, like everybody, I'm sure, to get past this election and get on with the business of helping to run Duluth. However, I will say that tonight, I'm really fortunate to be here with my wife, my best friend, the person I love most. She's everything to me, Beth. Denville grad, and we have two adult children, both College of St. Skalaskia graduates. How does that happen? Been really blessed as a family and really humbled to serve as a city councilor and have the opportunity to possibly serve another four years.
Thank you, candidates. To begin the question-and-answer portion of tonight's forum, we will start with those questions solicited and submitted by the organizing committee. Question one is a two-part question. Applies differently to District Four and At-Large Candidates. District Four Candidates: What are your goals for representing your constituents? And At-Large Candidates: How do you see yourself representing a whole city? Start with candidate Updegrove.
So when I first decided that I would run for office, what made it really exciting is to run at large. I really enjoy traveling the city of Duluth, the long city of Duluth, and getting to know it better. As a social studies teacher, I get to teach about our city, and I knew that by entering in this race, I get to learn a whole lot more about Duluth by getting to run, and that has been a great byproduct. What I take as a charge as an at-large city councilor is that we have the role of representing the entire city, where we need to look at the large issues, the identity issues, the issues that affect all of the city, not to be tied into what are our constituents' needs that affect their particular neighborhood. So when I initially decided to run, it was on this issue of protecting the waters of Lake Superior. We are a city that wins awards for our drinking water and its quality, and one of the issues in front of the council was whether or not the Duluth City Council should call for an evidentiary hearing on copper sulfide mining and how it would affect Duluth. And Councilors Russ and Councilor Filipovich see the role of a city councilor as different than I see it. I think that is an essential role of our city to take a stand and tell the DNR what we would like to see happen. When they make a decision of whether or not an evidentiary hearing should happen, they'll look to see what the city councilors have said, and I want to be part of that decision-making process.
Candidate Filipovich?
This is a very good question, and I know that... I grew up in the central part of Duluth next to Chester Creek. I've lived kind of more east Duluth, and now I live on the west side of Lake Avenue in the central hillside. And I have been, both four years ago and this year, door-knocking all over the place. That is one of the things that I think is really valuable for campaigning. I'm with Howie. I don't really like to sell myself either, but talking with people, hearing about what issues are important to individuals from all neighborhoods of this city are really, really important. Being an at-large councilor means that you have to know not only about different neighborhoods, but a whole slew of different issues. If you're an at-large councilor, you cannot be a single-issue person, and you have to think more broadly and more holistically than that. And I think, you know, I see my role as an at-large city councilor as the priority being to make sure that we can all find a better life here in Duluth, that we can all make a better life here in Duluth for ourselves. That means that we have to have economic, responsible economic development across this city, and housing across this city, and good-paying jobs across this city so we can provide for those critical city services like infrastructure, public safety, and others. Thank you very much.
Candidate Van Nette?
The one-mic night, sorry. Thank you. I'm 4th District. Just to note, I ran at large in the Rappoche School Board, and it is astounding, so I commend and congratulate for that astounding work. So the way I think about how I work with constituents is about... Leadership is about submission to duty and not elevation to power kind of work. So I think about being in the community, being with the people, and finding out what they want and need, even if they're not happy with me, and believe me. Sitting at the doors and talking to people, they shut the doors on the outfit, and it's like, okay, I get that, and that's okay. And you get to really tell what's going on, even if they're not happy with you. There's a message in there still. They're still not happy with government, holding somebody's hand, or however they want to say that. Also, a way of doing that, working with the community, is circle back. I believe big time in circle back to the community, circle back to the people we represent and work with, always getting back to validating what the people need, what they want, being inside the community so you can come back and bring that voice to the council level where those needs are what we need, that's what people want to hear. Otherwise, I wouldn't need to be there. So it's about circle back for me, and it's about duty and measuring them, then measuring duty. Thank you.
Candidate Russ?
Well, when I first ran for election, I'll tell you that... Is it working? Okay? All right. And I first started door-knocking all over the city of Duluth. I found some wonderful little neighborhoods I didn't even know existed, very interesting. And it's also interesting to get a sense of the difference in personalities of neighborhoods in parts of Duluth. As I stated earlier, housing is something that's very important to me, and it's my opinion that people, everyone should be able to choose the neighborhood they want to live in. We need to have affordable housing throughout the entire city of Duluth. It should not be segregated downtown or in Lincoln Park or any other neighborhood. So it's going to be really important, and it's not unreasonable to expect to have... be able to create around 100 affordable housing units a year, and that's what I'm hoping that we're going to be able to do. I also am also on DETA, and so we have a lot of important projects that are city-wide and for the benefit of the entire city. I also sit on the MIC Board of Metro-Politan Interstate Council, and that has to do with transportation issues. The Clarity Project is something a lot of people haven't heard about, but you're going to be hearing about it pretty soon. It's a... The Clarity Project is a regional mental wellness initiative. Mental health issues are very important to everyone in the city of Duluth.
Candidate Kennedy?
One of the things I would like to remind folks that I had mentioned before that I think is important as far as being able to represent the whole city. Growing up in Duluth, I lived in Harborview for quite a long time. We came here in the '60s. My dad was in the Air Force. We moved up to west Duluth when there was a flood back in the '70s, and I've been here since. I think of Duluth as a whole city. I don't think of it as a west Duluth or an east Duluth. I hung out in all parts of this city, and that's one of the things I want to make sure I bring forward. Now, again, I've had a broad range of experience in physical therapy for 25 years, working with all abilities, ages, and backgrounds, the Director of Rehab and PTO-T and speech. I'm also serving on the Planning Commission and the Imagine Duluth 2035, and I've been able to look at the whole city and look at housing, transportation, economic development, and our, you know, our economic development, our open spaces, even our environment. I think that's an important voice that I can bring to the table as well. One of the things I'm doing right now is doing a walk across the city. I've been walking east to west, meeting people right where they're at, and having those conversations with people in their neighborhoods and in their businesses, and listening to their ideas and your ideas about what's going to make a difference in our community. You know, one of the things I did learn and one of the things I keep hearing is that everyone in our city must do well to sustain Duluth's progress, and it really does matter who's at the decision-making table.
Candidate Hanson?
I will say that tonight, everybody's de-order is working very well. My jokes are never funny. To your question, what are my goals moving forward, and I'll take a little bit of a different approach. I think my goals are a lot personal in terms of, you know, I want to grow, continue to grow as a Duluth city councilor, and, you know, in my first four years, I think I was poked a lot with being in a minority group, and I think that I really need to continue to grow through that and not to strike back and not to resort back to things that feel normal for me. And that's as a former athlete, and if somebody wants to drop the gloves and have a bench-clearing brawl at the city council, as I would do as a hockey player, I mean, it doesn't reflect well on me, on my people that represent the district, and certainly on the council. And I think that, you know, that is really a strong goal for me, to try to learn how to operate and be a good representative in a minority system. You know, I'm currently working on my master's degree, and I wrote a paper that I turned in tonight at class that talks about groupthink and, you know, and how a majority party exerts a lot of pressure on people in a minority group and how that works. So it's things like that that I want to get better. I want it bigger than the way I've acted, frankly, in the first four years on the Duluth City Council.
Question number two: What are two initiatives that you would like to achieve in the next four years as a city councilor? Begin with candidate Russ. Begin with candidate Russ.
Well, number one is getting that affordable housing, at least 400 units throughout the city of Duluth. I think we can do it, we have to do it, and it's something that's very important to me. The other initiative that I'm not real actively involved in, but I attend all the meetings, and that is the Clarity Project. Mental health is a serious problem. Our firefighters are very much involved with this, and law enforcement as well, but we've got to figure out a way to pay for services. We need services, and we need a place for triage. Now, when law enforcement or firefighters or first responders at a home, they are trained to identify that there's a mental health component to whatever is going on in a family or with a person, but they have nowhere to do actual triage, which means how to decide, you know, whether that person should go to jail. We don't want them in jail anymore. We don't want them at the hospitals in the emergency rooms because it's dangerous for the staff as well as other patients. So it's something, of course, again, like everything else, we've got to come up with funding for this. So I would be very pleased if we can achieve that by the end of another four years.
Candidate Hanson.
I think it's really important that we continue to help, healthy, and push back type discussions from the community and from certain members of the council, that increasing taxes and setting higher rates for various city fees is not a long-term solution to our, or is not sustainable also. And I'm proud of the fact that the people in my district have asked me to stand strong, to be a strong voice pushing back against those types of increases because they are not sustainable. The impacts on people who live on fixed incomes and the working-class population are dramatic, and we need to continue to look for other sources to try to grow the business, to capture new growth, and things like that. So, you know, I'm not proud of the fact that, you know, I've had the courage and, you know, the energy and the support from some councillors too, that we can, you know, try to seek other solutions for that. And I think one of the big opportunities that we do have economically is to become more of a wired community, meaning that I think the opportunities are all online and for every industry, not necessarily just to include e-commerce. And I think that that's one opportunity that we do have to create an iron-mining-type environmental opportunity here in northeast Minnesota.
Candidate Kennedy.
Testing, testing. Okay. Feel like singing, y'all. Yes, thank you for the question. As an organizer and advocate, I care deeply about health equity, and I know that right now in Duluth neighborhoods, we have an 11-year difference in life expectancies. As a parish nurse and a sole proprietor of Healthy Alliance's Matter Consulting, I've seen firsthand how we can transform people's lives by using a holistic, comprehensive health equity approach when we're making policy decisions. So policies do matter. The next one would be building community resiliency and sustainability. As the president of the Riverfront Community Development, formerly known as the Spirit Valley Neighborhood Development Association, I have experience in building economic resilience and sustainability with organizations and neighborhood growth. I understand comprehensive priorities, and I'm looking forward to bringing a fresh voice and a unique perspective in how we're building communities so that we have a resilient, sustainable Duluth.
Candidate Filipovic.
Thank you. Well, number one for me, I always say this when I'm on the doors, it's on my lit piece, growing our community through economic equity. And to me, that means making sure that we are able to bring good-paying jobs at Duluth. We have 20% to 25% of Duluthians right now living in poverty. That is not good for our sustainable growth, our economic growth. So we need to solve that. One specific initiative for that, I think, is Earn Sick and Save Time. Another specific initiative to help with that would be to make sure that we have housing across the city and bring good-paying jobs. As a DIA member, that is what I have been doing along with the 1200 Fund. We need to make sure that our Duluth economy works for everybody. The second, perhaps larger initiative that I think that we can do here in Duluth and have an impact on, because we're already doing it, is to make our city more environmentally-friendly. We have partnered with organizations in Canal Park to provide a solar charging station for cars or electric vehicles. We have renovating the steam plant, and I've been down to State Capitol for two years in a row lobbying on behalf of our steam plant to make that system more efficient, not only more efficient money-wise, but more efficient environmentally, so not burning $2 million of the coal off of our Great Lake, and capital investments into solar, like we plan to do next year, and all those city buildings. Thank you very much.
Candidate Van Ness.
The two initiatives I think about, when I think about this, I think about strengthening my own, what I can do better, where I can learn something better, and put energy into it, and I think about the housing issue that we have in the fourth for sure, and doing better work with housing. I think I'd like to work with Barb a little closer on what she does, she does it so well there, and I want to figure out how to do that, and help the district and help us have more stable housing, and how we'll do that, because that's really important for us. At least, that's how I feel about it. Another thing I'd like to think about or work on is on the Energy and Environment Commission. I think I've been getting some pushback on environment and not being able to talk about it as a native woman has put me in some sticky places, and I want to address that. I want to talk about and work on, get the community engaged on taking care of our lake, taking care of the runoff, taking care of things that we can take care of as a city and as an initiative in this area. So Energy and Environment Commission and housing would be something I'd like to strengthen.
Candidate Uptegro.
When I was making a decision to run, I met with past and current city councillors to get a feel for what this job entails and how much can you really accomplish as a city councillor. And one thing I was cautioned about is, you know, four years seems like a long time, but things take a long time to get done. So the two initiatives that I'm most excited to actually get involved in that I think could be accomplished in this amount of time is the Earn Sick and Save Time ordinance that coming up here next week, the task force will make their presentation recommendation, and likely that a vote will not take place before the election. So I'm excited to be part of implementing that plan and of working with different interests in the city to make that work well for all of us, business owners and workers alike. Having attended the public hearings, the various ones of people sharing stories and then recommendations to be made, that's something near and dear to me that I want to be part of. The other initiative is something that's four years in the process and still not accomplished is a homeless person's bill of rights. I was really excited when Charlotte Garner was on the council, and it went through as a resolution. It's beautiful, it's poetic, it has a lot of ambitious statements, but it doesn't actually have an ordinance's power, it doesn't have enforcement power. We live in Duluth, you know, this is a beautiful day today, yes, 70 degrees maybe, but, you know, we have temperatures below zero for our high, and we have freezing temperatures year-round. We need to do a better job serving our homeless population.
Question three. What aspects of design benefiting pedestrians, motorists, tourists, and businesses do you like about the Superior Street project developed in 2015, and what, if anything, would you change if you could? Begin with candidate Van Ness.
So I could sit up here and say that I know everything about that, but I really don't. So with that being said, I will say I'm going to, I'll check into that and see what I can learn about it, and kind of pass on that, because I'm not going to say, tell you something that I don't have a clue about. I'll just be honest about that.
Candidate Hanson.
I think that's one of the things I do appreciate about running, your honesty, and that's commendable. And another thing that I think separates us a little bit is, I think experience does matter, and I think that, you know, I've labored mentally on that issue at Lake, and been really involved in the planning of it and whatnot, and this is a really key time moving forward, you know, with our downtown being ripped up for a period of two years, and all the other economic issues that are in play here in the city. Specific to your question, Chelsea, the, what I really do like about it is the fact that we're going to get down into the infrastructure, and we're going to really make those necessary deep infrastructural improvements, those sewer lines and the gas lines, and we're going to have the ability there to also make it into that wired community that I suggested. We're going to have fiber lines there for telephony and an internet thing, that we can have the downtown that can really wire it up strongly with the internet. What's kind of happening in Duluth is we're kind of turning this town over to the millennials, I believe, in many different regards. I think it's really important that those of us in our generation, that we understand what it may look like. It's going to mean downtown housing for young people who do not like, they love public transportation, not a choice. And I think we're going to see a lot of people relocate under between the two cities that are going to want to work in our co-labs, little offices in the downtown district.
Candidate Uptegro.
Well, part of running for city council is you get to meet all sorts of activists in town, and you find out what their interests are and what they're concerned with. So there's a bicycle and pedestrian advocate in town, Ben Garland, and I've met with him multiple times. He has concerns about the Superior Street project, and that it's not pedestrian-friendly enough, it's not really paying attention to pedestrians who are disabled, will have difficulty crossing traffic, and he once raised pedestrian crossings. He's also concerned with, will there be bike lanes available, and how are we accommodating for DTA public transportation, not just the issues of cars using our roads. Also, in learning about councillor Alyssa Hanson's Complete Streets program, that when we work on streets, we need to be thinking about all of these things. It's not just our cars and bikes, but it's pedestrians. Sidewalks should be part of this project as well. So when we have a big, you know, steam plant revisioning of how we're going to power our city and moving in an environmental direction, it's important to recognize that when you do work below the street, you can do work on the street at the same time, sort of that idea of, you know, measure twice, cut once. You don't need to, you know, fix things under the street and then have to, or fix the street and then have to dig up the new street to fix what's under the street. We have some major infrastructure issues with our water delivery system that we need to keep in mind when we're working on our streets.
Candidate Russ.
Well, I remember a couple of years ago, we spent almost an entire year having meetings all over downtown and making opportunities for people to weigh in on what they did want and what they didn't want. And one of the things that is kind of disappointing is that the business folks who have their businesses right on Superior Street really, really want to hang on to that parking, right? It's right in front of their business. And so I'm pretty sure that the final plan does include angled parking like we have right now. And I got, I've been in communication with Ben Garland as well, and he's got some very good ideas, there's no question about it. I would be very surprised if we could talk the planning department into going through another round of ideas, but I don't think, I think it's a good idea, because it's been quite a while now since we've done that, and maybe people, you know, we can change some minds, but it was a very big project, so it could be another very big project as well, I suppose. But I do like their ideas, they're more creative, and they do pay attention to more than just what the business folks want.
Thank you. So as a planning commissioner, I had a chance to sit in on some of the conversations in 2015, and talking to community members, and, you know, knocking on doors and walking across the city, and just listening to people's voices. We are making a move towards more of a multimodal city and moving away from cars, which is a good thing, especially when I talk about health equity and making sure that people have availability of all transportation. Listening to business owners, this is going to be a tough one, especially when we're going to be removing some of the access to their businesses when we work on these roads. But the bottom line is that we need to make sure we're creating policies through a lens of health, and when we do that, we make the best decisions, and I believe that's the best practice. One of the other things we need to do is to make sure we're going to meet, talk, and find a way how this is going to be a win-win for everyone. Working on the planning commission and the Imagine Duluth 2035 and the health and all policies, we've already changed some of the principles on how we're looking at our transportation, our economic development, our environment, our open spaces, and when we look at that through a lens of health and fairness, I believe we'll make the best decisions that will work for our city.
Candidate Filipovic.
Thank you. Well, I voted for the streets, the Superior Street reconstruction plan, so it must be perfect. No, it's not perfect. I walk to work a lot during the summer, and I walk to client sites, and I use Superior Street as my main mode of transportation when I'm walking. One thing that I am very excited about is the better pedestrian access points on Superior Street that we're going to have, wider sidewalks. It's being designed in a way that will maximize the sun on the, I guess, what, northwest side of the street, that's where the sun kind of shines the most, so can get your tambo walking to work. One thing that I did advocate for during all the meetings that Barb mentioned was to have a convertible option for Superior Street. And we actually got that language into the plan to be able to convert some of the areas, some of the parking areas into better or multimodal transportation modes. One thing that I would also like to do that, is actually possible, instead of just making the whole street wider, which would be fantastic, would be to, if we're going to have angled parking, let's get another variance from the state of Minnesota, MinDOT, to have reverse angled parking, because it's safer for people traveling on bikes and safer for cars pulling out. Thank you very much.
Question four. With over 600 households on the priority list for Duluth's coordinated entry system for housing for people experiencing homelessness, do you support requiring a certain percentage of all new housing development to be designated as affordable housing? Please explain. Candidate Hanson.
I do, and here's why. I think that it should be only applied, however, to the, when we have public subsidies for the developers who are building this type of housing. I think there should be a certain percentage, a goodly percentage, that should be also committed to low-income type housing. However, when the housing is being built by a private developer with no public subsidy, I think the developers should be able to do their own PNIs and make their own decisions. Let the market dictate what type of housing that developer will build.
Candidate Filipovic.
Yes, I do. This is something that the city has been talking about, something that I've been in conversation to it. This is something that, that the city has been talking about, something that I've been in conversation to it for, for a while now. We're, we're still waiting for the city subsidy policy kind of draft to be coming from administration. And I look forward to seeing that and I, I really do hope that there is a percentage for, for housing projects to incorporate a percentage for affordable housing. I really do think that we need more, not only mixed-use housing across our city, but more mixed-income housing across our city. I think it only bodes well for, for all, all parties involved. And yes, when we are helping to subsidize housing projects, that is something we, as a city, can absolutely demand, that is something that we actually have the authority to do. And I think it's a good thing for all citizens of Duluth, so I think it's, it's something that we, that we need to do. Whether it be TIF or tax abatements when we're partnering with the county to get some of these developments in. And, you know, we, we have, we have actually started to do this on the council already. There have been some, some projects where we have pushed back on the developer already and said, hey, we want there to be an affordable housing component to this. I'm really glad that we have done that and I would expect that we would continue to, or at least this current council would, even if that policy was not set in stone. Thank you.
Candidate Russ.
Zach referenced a policy that we're waiting for from administration. I'm not sure why it's taking them so long because I think we've been talking about this for about a year. So we're looking forward to that policy. I would agree with Councilor Hansen that if somebody is going to develop something completely without any subsidy from the city or the state, they should not be required to have a component of affordable housing. We would certainly encourage them to do that. But I don't think that it really would be even possible to get away with that. Nobody would want to develop in Duluth if, if that was going to be the case. We need senior housing also, and I don't think that has been mentioned, but I'm getting more and more questions when I'm darn knocking around the city from people who would like more senior housing available. A lot of people want to sell their big house, the kids are gone and don't, never, don't come back very often, so they would like to be able to sell, but also buy something that's smaller. They want to downsize, but there isn't much available in Duluth. And so I think we need to also focus on that. And if someone wants to do senior housing, I don't think that we should necessarily require any of it to be affordable housing. Because I think the market is going to take care of that with regard to seniors and what they're willing not to pay for.
Candidate Kennedy.
Yes, I think it's important that we have local solutions for all types of housing. And it's really important because we haven't received any HUD funding since 1996. Hasn't been increased. We've lost $3 million over the last, every year from HUD. We have a 2% vacancy available here in Duluth, which is lower than the state of 4%. So we need to have some local solutions. Developing incentives for developers using TIF and abatements so they can build some of that needed housing. I believe anyone that wants to come and develop here should give back to the community. And I think that's really important in how we're going to lower the health equity issues. We have families and individuals being forced into homelessness and living with housing insecurities. So I believe, yes, we need to make sure we have these local solutions.
Candidate Up to Grove.
I also support the concept of having a certain percentage of housing set aside as affordable housing. It's, it's exciting to think about being on the council when you have a mayor who at the state of the city address says, one of the major things, one of the three things I want to address is affordable housing for people making under $50,000 a year. So being able to partner with the mayor on, on that issue is, is an appealing prospect, I think, for, for all of us. When we're thinking about this, you know, 600 people on a waiting list to, to get housing, it's important to recognize that a lot of those people and a lot of those families are experiencing homelessness because of that. As a, as a high school teacher, I, in my, in our professional development days, we learned that in Duluth, we have an increase now in the number of students who are attending our schools who are homeless. I mean, this is not just an issue that, that affects adults. When people think about housing, I think that we often forget about how this is impacting children and what does it mean to, to live in a, in a city where you're couch hopping with your family from, from one friend's place to another, going, going to a homeless shelter and then going to school the next day. You know, these are, these are important issues. I think that one initiative we, we could look at is there are cities who create incentives if you live in the duplex and you rent out the other side of encouraging people to do that. That, that brings both the possibility of affording a home and providing housing.
Candidate Bennet.
Yes, I, everybody's awesome up here. Sorry, whoever that is. Everybody's got amazing ideas about definite housing issues. I work in it every single day at Community Action. It's, it's heartbreaking to think you have to make $29 a month for two kids to afford something. That's just not okay. I just can't swallow that and it's terrible to do that and to think about how to work on that. And that's why when I talk about the two initiatives, strengthening that and figuring out how we do that better. As a matter of fact, sometime a little before we started running, I was talking to Zach and we were having a heated, little fun discussion about building upward rather outward. And so we're kind of going through that and I said, don't block the lake, Zach. I go, don't even try to do that. And so we were having some discussion about how we figured this out because it's getting cold six months of the year. We're, those little kids out there, they're cold. That, that worries me, that, that I have a hard time with that. So I'm all over trying to strengthen that. I support the council's push now and if I get there, I'm going to help do that however I can.
Thank you, candidates.
It's not just us.
I appreciate everyone very much, the sound system, you can appreciate the candidates.
Question five. How would you approach possible recycling and environmental laws for Duluth? Candidate Kennedy.
So recycling is a very important part of maintaining our health in our city. I remember when we started the recycling program when I, I was younger. As far as looking at how we're going to recycle, I know that we began to use sort of electronic trash cans in our city parks. That's one way we can do that. Making sure we're, we're looking at other ways to support our valuable water and making sure clean water is clean because that is a quality of life and a health issue as well. When I think about recycling, I do, I really think about how our water and how important that is and making sure that we have policies and we have people who are going to protect our water. We can talk about recycling. I could learn more about that because that's not a specific issue as far as recycling that I looked at. But I know that we have other issues like the water and making sure that we have a quality of life. We're protecting our watersheds. We're spending millions of dollars right now cleaning up the estuary in St. Louis River. And we need to make sure that we're vetting any possibility of our water being either, either having potential impacts to the Lake Superior or the groundwater, either from mining, species control and pollution. If you want me to speak more specifically to recycling, that's something I'll have to learn more about.
Candidate Hansen.
Well, I support recycling and I would opine that the, the good, my good friends at the Piedmont Heights, Duluth Heights, the Lincoln Park and the Far Western Duluth are the best recyclers in, upon this planet.
Candidate Bennet.
Here, here. Okay, um, sorry. Because of the culture I come from, the, the way that we're taught, it's in our DNA to think about the earth, to think about the water, think about the environment, to think about it holistically. I have, my community, my elders have been talking about this subject all our entire existence for centuries about how we take care, what are, being stewards of the land, the wild, the earth, air. That's our jobs in every single way that we do that. I take care of it at home, I recycle myself, like how we said, we're the best at it, so definitely that. And I teach my kids, I teach generations about how to do that and what that means to the earth. I, um, I want to, I love it, actually, it's great. The Energy and Environment Commission that I would love to work on would be having a discussion in there about how we implement that going forward and how we work on, how we work on that. So I think that's great. I think it's a really good way to be the best at what we're doing here, so thank you.
Candidate Russ.
To be honest with you, I thought we did, we're required to recycle and, and we do, of course. So was the question how to bring forth an ordinance that would require it? Is that what the question was?
The question was, how would you approach possible recycling and environmental laws for Duluth?
For everybody, you, you just, okay, for everybody. Well, I, basically I would work with the folks at W L S D as well as, um, just working with the, the city attorney's office in terms of drafting something. I, I think though, that's the kind of thing that would be wise to go out into the neighborhoods and have some meetings with regard to it and just find out what the sentiment is with regard to that. And we do that with most things that are going to end up in, in statute. But, um, so I think that's just do what we usually do. We have events all throughout the city and sometimes it takes us a year before we have something complete or know for sure whether we're going to go forward with something. But I think that's just the way you have to, um, to work, work something like that because just drafting something and putting it before the council is probably not great to go over with the big bang. So that would be the way to do it.
Candidate Up to Grove.
Well, I could end up talking about this for a while, so I'll try to keep it all sort of focused in if I can. You know, our recycling and environmental laws are really essential for a city like Duluth. You know, when we are voted the best outdoor city in the nation by Outdoor Magazine, I think people come here expecting that we have an environmentally conscious city council and that our laws reflect that. So, you know, some things to consider is that we don't on a, on a city-wide scale have any sort of compost collection. Now, at our elementary schools, we've, we've sort of trained the elementary students that when you, when you go up to the garbage, food doesn't go in the garbage. Well, of course not, food goes in this compostable thing. Otherwise, you know, you're, you're contributing to wastefulness and, you know, all sorts of other issues. And, and some farmers will collect that, feed it to livestock. There's all sorts of, a whole process there going on. That, that's just one issue. You know, we also need to have more availability of recycling in our park systems. We have plenty, plenty of people going to parks and not being able to do anything with their recyclable goods except to throw them into the garbage. Now, some people are super conscious and will put that in their pocket or in their backpack and carry that with them, but we shouldn't expect people to do that. So I think we can, we can improve on making that available. I think when Barb brought up W L S D, they're incredibly impressive. They have the ability to, to turn in hazardous materials from your garage and painting and other processes, even pick up, it's reusable. It's not just, you know, getting rid of it. You can go and pick up repaint and, and other materials at W L S D. Anyway, I guess I knew I ran out of time, but there's a lot of things that we should consider.
Candidate Filipovic.
Well, thank you. You know, my, my parents, my grandparents really taught, really taught me to be environmentally conscious and, and really hold that to the highest regard. There's a lot of things that, that we are doing in the city of Duluth. Earlier this year, I actually sponsored a resolution to, to encourage the administration to have more recycling in our parks. And then the city of Duluth received a grant to do exactly that. And then the resolution that I also drafted, also reshifted some of the, some of the recycling centers within our parks that we already currently have to make better use of them. So the ones that are solar powered and can crush things up and can be out there longer can be in a park that's maybe not visited as much by city staff to clean out. That's, that's something that we can do both for environmental efficiency and, and city budgeting efficiency. The city has a 300-foot buffer between us and our trout streams. We have 16 trout streams in Duluth, I grew up next to one of them. We use all of our 62 streams and waterways in Duluth as our sanit, not sanitary, but stormwater runoff. And so we have holding tanks and cleaning tanks, making, making sure that we clean those on a regular basis, which, again, it comes down to resources. We have not been doing as good of a job as we should be doing. I like the idea of having a citywide composting effort. There are, this is not a new idea, many other cities have done this and I think we could copy those ideas that have worked already. Thank you.
We have time. Time for one audience submitted question this evening. What will you do to tackle drug abuse in parks in all of Duluth? We begin with candidate Russ.
Thank you. First of all, I think we need to be putting Sharps containers throughout the city, but especially in parks. People are finding, when they're taking their children to parks, they're finding needles and they don't have anywhere to, to put them. And they're, they're taking them home and putting them in a safe place. But that was one of the first things I think that we should do is get those things in our parks and other places where we are finding them now. And that would be, other than parks, I would guess, along the lake walk would be someplace that's considered a park, I guess, in the beaches. But we need to put them in as many places as we can.
Candidate Up to Grove.
So, you know, in addition to sort of the cleanup of the, of the parks themselves with Sharps containers and the needles being found in parks is incredibly important. But I think if we're talking about the abuse that's happening in parks, we need to recognize why. Why is there drug abuse, you know, in our community? What is, what is happening? Let's not just deal with the symptoms of what we can see, but what is behind all of that? We're not going to arrest our way out of this problem. It's not, we need, you know, more surveillance by law enforcement in our parks. That's not, that's not going to be the answer, that's just going to move it to somewhere else. You know, how are we doing, Barb had talked about earlier, with mental health services? That, that's a major issue of why people are, are turning to drugs for their own self-medication. These issues of earned, sick and safe time and affordable housing, these are all wrapped up into why are people turning to a, a way to escape? There's a pain that they're feeling and they're seeking to not feel that pain anymore. And we, as, as a city council, need to recognize that the more we do to lift up and improve the lives of those in our community that are struggling the most, the less of a drug problem we're going to have. We're, we're not going to get there through a show of force. We're going to get there through a show of love, of our courageous ability to fund some of these services like homeless services and affordable housing initiatives. That's how we deal with the drug problem, that's, that's the source.
Candidate Kennedy.
Thank you. So as a parish nurse and owning my own business, I help the Alliance Matters Consulting. You know, I've done a lot of work on some of the social issues with drugs and mental health. You know, I've been able to see firsthand how if we use a holistic a holistic, comprehensive health equity approach to nurture people's lives physically, mentally and spiritually, that we can make a difference. You know, when we look at health equity, you know, we need to make sure we're looking at the social health, economic health and environmental health and how people have access to this. One way that we could begin to make it safer for other community members who are having to, you know, deal with needles, I found a couple needles behind my mom's home. She didn't notice, so she does. And I was thinking, it's right by the garbage can. I was thinking, wow, just put it in the garbage can. I think I'm going to put a note there, right? But we need to make sure we have some sort of maybe Sharps available. And that would be a possibility to keep other community members safe. While we look at the social issue of why people are using drugs. You know, when I was younger, there were some difficult times when I was going through, you know, sexual abuse and working hard as a single mom, getting off welfare and, you know, using alcohol and what, you know, alcohol is a drug as well and how you kind of get wrapped up into that. But we're right, we're not going to arrest our way out of this. We can't afford to task our police. We need to come up with a solution that's comprehensive and looks at it as a social issue. And building communities and building individuals is one way to do that.
Candidate Hansen.
Well, I don't have a solution for the drug problem. I'm not the smartest guy on this bus. But what I do know is that, you know, this is an epidemic in our community. I'm glad that we're starting to have a community discussion about how the best practices to deal with this. My concern about this whole issue as it relates to parks is that, you know, I'm old enough to remember when, you know, walking through a Duluth park and playing softball there or whatever we did was a safe park. And my motivation is to help continue to make safe neighborhoods, including safe parks, so people can stop looking out of their windows in fear and feel safe and comfortable again. And I think that, you know, this is a police matter and as a city councillor, you know, one of our charges is to set the budget and to make sure that the different departments that deal with these type of things have the resources that they need. And again, I'm not the smartest guy on the bus, but I'm smart enough to realize that we need to throw a lot more resources at this. We need to have a community discussion, bring all the people to the table and figure out a proper solution. But every city in America is dealing with this and it's making it difficult to feel safe in our community. And that's my concern.
Candidate Ben Ned.
I have a lot of personal experience with this microphone. This subject, it is, I can't find the right words to talk about how horrifying and bad that OD is, especially in my communities, how it's held close to home. Every year for my family, giant families, every year. How do I deal with that? I put on a block party to know my neighbors. One time my son found a needle right outside our door, right outside our house. So I was tired of it. I called the police chief, I called the mayor, I called the elected officials, I called the news. I called everybody, sick of it. And in working with the Citizen Review Board, we can't arrest our way out of this, this is not that. And we can't, like Janet said, we can't tax our police that way. And community policing, that's a overhaul. That's a big job that we're asking and that we're doing. So I do my part and then also recognize that there's other people like us and all of you all that really care about the issue and working together that way. It's going to take all of us to do that and to help each other through it. And I know for a fact, just from my community speaking, the White Preservation is going to open an office in Duluth for pregnant moms who are using, and that's coming soon. And I'm really, really excited about that because there's a cycle. And for our DNA and the issues we have collectively, we need to work on that culturally specifically for us. We have our own culture in this town. We need to work through that. Thank you.
Candidate Filipovic.
Thank you. Yeah, you, this is an issue that affects every community in our nation. There was a 60 Minutes program recently talking about heroin epidemic. And 80% of people who are now addicted to opioids started with prescriptions. So that's the why, why we are, why our communities are suffering in this way. And everyone up here, I think, said we cannot arrest our way out of the problem. That's exactly right. I just talked to our police chief yesterday. That's why I was referencing back to my notes with that meeting with him. And he always talks about the three-legged stool enforcement, which is certainly a component to this, making sure that we get drug dealers arrested and people who are preying on folks who are addicted, education and rehabilitation. I remember the DARE program has not worked, obviously. When I was in school, we had that. And it is really, really tough. Some positive things, we have, this year so far, we have less overdose deaths due to heroin. And that is in large part thanks to grants that we have received. Our police department is able to get Narcan, which is that lifesaving drug specifically for opioids. But that does not mean that overdoses have decreased. They have increased, but overdose deaths have decreased. We partnered with the county to do some fantastic things. There's a grant that we got and I'm out of time.
At this time, the candidates will have two minutes to provide a closing statement. We'll begin with candidate Hansen.
Thank you again for hosting this. The current makeup of the council is, as I view it, seven progressives, one independent thinker, me, and one ultra-conservative councillor, Posley. And I think in that current configuration, that it lends itself to some very healthy discussion. And I think it also allows us as a council to agree, to disagree and to be civil. And I think that the voice that I have brought in the last four years is a firm voice and a voice that takes quite a bit of courage and experience and research that's needed to stand behind the issues of telling an administration that is, in my view, hell-bent on taxing, increasing our taxes and increasing our fees and to stand up and to say, you know, stop taking away all of our money, get your hand out of our wallets and let's get back to the basics. And that's a little bit of a redneck approach, I think. All conservative, but I think it's really important that we have that voice on the council moving forward. So my attitude is that in this election is that that the people of my district, neighborhood, has a decision to make. Do they want that type of leadership? Do they want to continue that for the next four years? Do they want somebody that's going to fight for it, to keep those taxes and fees lower or not? And all of that by, of course, the democratic process and whatever it is. And it never became my identity, but I'm willing to fight for that for the next four years.
Candidate Uptegro.
Whether it's in my current position as a high school teacher or coaching my children in a variety and all, many of Duluth's children in a variety of different athletics or working with homeless and runaway youth and disadvantaged youth prior to that, I believe I position myself well to be an advocate for youth and young families on the Duluth City Council. And I think by being that advocate, we can have long-term change for our city in addressing many of the economic inequities that we have. While that's maybe one thing that I offer in my own skillset, I think it's important to recognize that in the at-large race, you get to pick two of us. And how do you go about making your choice? Who are the two people you're going to support? You know, I think if you look at our values, we have very similar values. And you heard us speak on affordable housing and drug issues and all sorts of other things. And there's maybe not a huge difference between us. And I think even when it comes to, for me, the main issue that I care mostly about, which is protecting Lake Superior and our clean water, which is central to our identity, to our economy, to our well-being. I think that we all share that personal belief that that is something we should do. But as councillors, I believe that it is our role as city councillors to stand up for that lake every time that it is in danger. And I believe that copper sulfide mining puts our entire community, our economy, ourselves at risk. And we need councillors who will stand up and say that they believe that that is true as well. And when you are, the Department of Natural Resources is making a decision of whether or not copper sulfide mining should have an evidentiary hearing, you can look to the city of Duluth and say, how did they vote? Well, they voted that we didn't need to have one. And that makes it really vulnerable for us as a city. And I worry that my children are not going to be able to grow up and all of our children are not going to be able to grow up in the city that we love, that we adore. Water is, what happens to the water happens to us. And we need to recognize that as city councillors.
Candidate Filipovic.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for being here. Thank you to the legal women voters for hosting our third League forum. And throughout all of these discussions we've had, there's been a lot of folks attending and there's been a lot of engagement. And it's clear that we have a good populace in Duluth that really wants to make our city better for everyone living in Duluth. And I'm one of you. As a councillor representing all of Duluth, I know and I have seen that when we have a community-led discussion, we can break down barriers and really get positive things done. I'm really, really proud of the positive working relationships that I've developed with community leaders, business leaders and other elected officials within our community. And I'm really proud of the work that I've done as the youngest city councillor in Duluth's history. It's pretty cool. And you can go to my website to see all of the different endorsements that I have or different groups that I've been endorsed by and those working relationships that I continue to have. I'll just remind everyone that I'm the only financial professional on the council and running in this race. And the most important thing that the city council does every year is determine our city budget. Because that paves the way for everything else that we're going to do for the next year and beyond. A few years ago, I went on a homeless outreach walk and I met a man who had a job living underneath the freeway. And he just got back, he worked at Burger King, walked over and he did not have a place to live in Duluth. And he had a job. That's why I'm running. I think that we all need to be able to have the ability, the opportunity to make a good life in Duluth. I think that we have been working towards that goal, but there is certainly more to do. I'm going to continue to use my experience as a councillor to help drive progressive policy. Because until our economic disparities are addressed, our growth that we have experienced will not be sustainable. And I ask for your vote. Thank you very much.
Candidate Kennedy.
Thank you. And thank you for inviting me here tonight. As an organizer and advocate, I care deeply about health equity and know that all Duluth neighborhoods and everyone in our city must do well to sustain Duluth's progress. And it really does matter who's at the decision-making table. Right here, you know, inequality hurts everyone. And we have many individuals in our community facing systemic barriers, unintentional consequences, racial inequities that prevent them from getting ahead. And I know that the more diverse our table is, the better solutions that we will make. As a media and trained in conflict resolution, I know that we can make decisions that work for everyone. I also know that we cannot continue to do the same thing and expect a different result. As a president of the Riverfront Community Development Center, which was also known as the Spirit Valley Neighborhood Development Association, I do have experience in building economic resilience and sustainability within organizations rooted in neighborhood growth. I do understand comprehensive priorities and will bring a fresh voice with a unique perspective to the city council as we continue moving forward with everyone in all of our Duluth communities. And I know that you can all make a difference. I ask for your vote to elect me Janet Kennedy to the Duluth City Council at Large, November 27. And that is a Tuesday. Thank you. Oh, 7, not 27. November 7, Tuesday, November 7. Yeah, don't be late. Thank you.
Candidate Ben Ned.
Hello again. Thank you very much. I am super excited that this is our last time doing this. I'm happy about that. But ready to get to work, ready to do what we need to be done here. I think a lot about that and leadership is about submission to duty and not elevation to power kind of work, where it's about the community and the people and what they want. And everybody's got a voice at the table and that we all matter. We all want safe neighborhoods. We all want jobs. We all want to make sure our kids can get to school safely. We want to make sure that the drug issues we have, we all want that. And I want to be a strong part of that. I want to make sure that people's needs and issues come up and that we can be ready for them and help deal with that. I want to make sure that our city is doing better work and doing great work. So I am grateful to be here. Thanks for everything and I look forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Candidate Russ.
First, I want to thank the League. This, by far, in my opinion, is the best forum we have had all season. It really is. The questions were great, great audience. Nobody's booing, so we haven't tipped over anybody's water. First of all, I want to, with regards to the drug thing, that is a health problem. It's not a criminal justice problem and it shouldn't be treated as a criminal justice problem. And it's going to be tough. It is a national problem, that is for sure. Anyway, I am so passionate about housing because as an attorney, I see what goes on in courthouse week after week. I handle cases without payment from the volunteer attorney program and that's all I'm using my license for. I didn't want to give it up because it's almost impossible to get it back if you do. So I take referrals and they almost always have to do with evictions. And it just breaks your heart. You can go, they have certain days of the week and times of the day that they do a bunch of evictions all at once. And it just breaks your heart. These are families with small children. And you know, once you have an eviction on your record, it becomes very difficult to get anybody else to rent to you. And that's why I got so involved with this housing issue. And we've just got to do a better job with this. And I think everybody here agrees that affordable housing is something that is very, very important to all of us. And that's why I want another term. I want to be able to continue working on that issue. I want to continue working on a lot of the projects that we're doing through DETA. There's just a lot, a lot to be done. I guess that's the most important thing I want to say about that. I think we just have to be, stay on top of administration and keep things moving and get as much of the housing built as we can. Thanks.
That concludes the question portion of our forum. Thank you, candidates. When sponsoring forums like this, our purpose is to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to you. There's never enough time to cover all the questions in a limited setting such as this. If your questions were not addressed, we encourage you to reach out to the candidates directly. Additionally, I would direct you to the League's website, lvwduluth.org, where you can read a voter guide that has additional information about the candidates. Once again, I would like to extend a sincere thank you to the candidates here tonight who have participated in the forums this election season. I also want to express thank you to PAC TV for filming, video... Video of this forum will be available on the LEAGUE's website. I'd also like to thank Mr. Dees for hosting this evening and the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation for the Civility Certified Materials. Thank you to all of you for making this event possible, and most importantly, I want to encourage you to exercise your right to vote on November 7. Thank you and good evening.